I'd like to call this meeting the Leged Town Council to order, please rise, for the Fledge of Allegiance.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you call the board?
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Novrowski?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Here.
Mr. France?
Here.
Mr. Gabori?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mrs. McGrath?
Here.
Mr. Soms?
Here.
And here's our last one.
Thank you. Mayor Rodolica, would you do the honors?
Yes. I'd like to take just a moment to introduce someone to the council. Officer, would you come and join us? Lieutenant, our newest officer, the Leged Police Force Officer Kyle Wong. And I will let Lieutenant Brinkley try and do more of the introduction.
We're very happy to have Officer Wong on board. He was in New York, his department partner coming here. He's been working with us for a little less than a month. He's sworn in last week. He started patrol duties this past week. And we're nice to be up to full speed and full strength for the first time in quite a while. So, very happy to have that. Happy to have Officer Wong on board.
Okay. Well, thanks.
(applause).
Have any words, Paul?
Um... (laughter).
How are you? Thank you very much.
You as well.
Thank you.
This time, already resident and property owner comments. It's just, I guess I could add, so, yeah, generally. Obviously, no committee commission or board reports, account comments of town counselors. Anyone? Mrs. McGrath?
Okay. Two things. One, Legerd High School has five foreign exchange students this year, two from France, two from Spain, sorry, two from Germany, two from Spain, and one from China. And we have the Chinese student. And if anybody is interested in hosting a student, even for a happy year, please let me know, and I will be happy to point you in the right direction. Also, I mentioned this at last council meeting, we are doing again the Know Your Town, starting on September the fourteenth. There is literature out on that end, so we hope that you will take advantage of that. It starts September the fourteenth at the Nathan Lester House, and Lee Moore is going to dress up as Nathan Lester and do the one-man show, as if it was back in the days of Nathan Lester.
Okay. Any other comments from town counselors?
I have two. I wanted to compliment the mayor and Department of Public Works on the completion of Gallup Hill Road. It looks excellent, well-done. Secondly, remind the residents that Legerd Fair is once again upon us, September five, six, and seven. That's the following Friday after this one comes. So, I hope everybody turns out for that. That's it.
Any other comments?
I would like to just mention that September seventeenth, the farmer's market, that will be the final day of the farmer's market, and it will be a community day. And so, any nonprofits are welcome to be there, set up a table or a tent, hand out literature. They won't be able to sell anything, but hand out literature. So, any of you that are involved with nonprofits, spread the word. It should be a good day, and it's kind of a thank you to the community for a successful year at the farmer's market. So, September seventeenth. And we do have vendors. We have pizza, and we have hot dogs, and lots of good other things happening, like entertainment, et cetera.
Any other comments? Can someone do the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Motion's been made, seconded. Roxanne, would you call the board?
Just for the two cents minutes, I have to abstain for the sixth. I wasn't here.
Okay. We can do them separately. So, the motion or the second or the first only. Roxanne, would you call the board?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Abstain.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one in censure.
Motion carries. On the next, set a minute.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made, seconded.
Mr. Novrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Gabori?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Abstain.
Mr. Soms?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one in censure.
Do have communications. Under referrals, I did receive the Parks and Recreation's proposal for changes to ordinance twelve. Is it twelve, Roxanne? And that was the ordinance for creating the Parks and Recs Commission, and it hasn't been looked at since nineteen seventies, something. It was a long time ago. And so, I have been referring that to the Admin Committee, and you will excuse, you should be getting a legislative file on that for Parks and Recs. Subcommittee liaison reports. Admin, Mr. Eichelberg?
Administration Committee met earlier tonight in a special meeting, and we continued our discussion on nuisance animals. Animal Control Officer was not able to attend tonight, so we were not able to wrap things up. But, we're going to continue to discuss that and hopefully come to, you know, get some information out to the public. We made several appointments that are going to be on our agenda later, and we also reviewed ordinance number seventy-two, which is an ordinance regarding adult-oriented business, and the Town of Berlin's sexually-oriented business ordinance, and agreed to send it over to the Ad Hoc Zoning Committee for review and recommendations as it relates to zoning.
Good. Any questions for Admin? Finance, Counselor France?
In addition to what is on the agenda, Finance Committee met last week and had two discussion items. The first was Superintendent Patterson, who's business manager for Lethrop, and Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Strickland, came and they were looking for additional grant for the Go Back program of approximately $200,000, and they were looking for that. We had a discussion about the revenue side of the budget, expenditure side of the budget, and what exactly the amount of the grant would be awarded. And so, interesting part is this grant has been in town since nineteen eighty-one, and it was only coming into light now and it hadn't been addressed. If you look at revenue only based on our side, there's only about $11,000 delta, above what they budgeted. If you look at purely the expenditure side, the budget increased $150,000, so we would be, by that definition alone, only be a $49,000 delta, and that's with definitions supplanting. So, the outcome of that discussion was additional information from the business manager. The Finance Chair, Strickland, was going to potentially seek legal opinion, and we were going to agree on the language of the question to the lawyer. I had not seen anything to date from the U.R., additional information, so that question is still pending. They did request to be on the agenda next week for discussion and action, unless we get additional information, if that change would be different than we assumed. So, that's kind of where we left that discussion. The second was, the agenda was on the rented ACO facility, received a note from the ACO concerning the condition. We go back in some relative recent history, the last time we met, we had a field walk at the facility. The agreement at that time with the state ACO was that you would fix one quarantine rod both inside and outside. At the time, Public Works was, they'd be within their capability to do it. By the time that they were able to assemble the estimate, the materials, oh, they were longer able to do it, and then it didn't go forward to finance, and when it did, this letter came forward, in a nutshell, stating that the facility was unsafe for both personnel and animals. Very detailed in the letter. Concern I have is now that the ACO has written that letter, it's now notified the town about the building. My recommendation to Mayor was that if, if that in fact, the condition is unsafe, then you close the facility until the conditions are safe. The Mayor was going to follow up with the ACO and see clarification on what repairs need to be made to make it safe and come back to your finance. So, that's, you know, the issue's been ongoing for about six or seven months, and we've been back and forth on what the repairs need to be done. The other recent initiative is the potential of the Corbett facility to have a regional application for ACO facility. Would not change having ACO in town, but certainly a decision on whether you repair an existing facility if you're going to go forward with that. We don't know a timeline. The mayor indicated that about a month, we may have something from Waterford that would indicate what the buy-in, if you will, and the cost would be for the facility, and then we're going to make a decision on what that's going to be, but it's unlikely it would be within a year. So, it would be something you need to do in the interim to keep the facility going if we are going to go towards that direction. That's my report.
Any questions for Finance?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm Chairman. I just have a question. You did mention, when you were somewhat related to the grant issue, and along the same line having to do with Board of Ed Finance, I was reading, and I don't know if you've read their minutes from last week's Board of Ed meeting, but in there, they indicated that all of their transfers had been made for last year, which allowed them to indicate that they had a balance of, you know, a positive balance at the end of the year. And I know this is just beating the same drum over and over, but my question is, and I don't know who, where this falls, on the you, with the Chairman, or myself, but again, we've been really pressing to get those transfers actually made into the, you know, into last year's budget, so that when we prepare next year's budget, we have the proper baseline. And I know the Chairman understands what I'm talking about. So, I don't know, and maybe, you know, Counselor Gabori, when he goes to report, we could, you know, talk about that a little bit more. But, you know, the line items, just as you could see in the general government budget, if you look at the line items that we, that are the baseline line items in a new budget, they're not the same as the line items in many cases, some significantly, some not so significantly, because the budget is adjusted. And I think that is very, very important, and I know there's been some real progress there in terms of use of MUNIS, which makes these types of things happen. So, it's one thing, you know, to make the transfers, but I think they somehow have to be, you know, populated to the Board of the Council.
Agreed.
Any other questions for Finance? IT?
IT is on it.
The IT one report is that the, since our last meeting, that the MIS Director has actually put up online that to get to the ICSOM portal, you only have to type in through the URL, openledyard.com. So, and that will get you right to the ICSOM portal.
Thank you. Land use?
Land use didn't meet. We met on August sixth. We recognized the $500,000 grant that had been provided to the steep grant for upgrade to the scenic upgrade to the Legerd Center. We've also continued discussions on potential uses for the Clark Farm property. We also met with a resident who's been having ongoing zoning issues with a neighbor. Interesting bit of, I know that the individual of the day's talked to the mayor, talked to Counselor France, myself, the whole land use committee. He's been going around trying to get some help based upon what he sees as a zoning issue on a property over on Legerd Hill Road, where most of the property is actually in North Stoneington. It's a ninety-acre farm with 1.8 acres being in Legerd. The complaint that's been that he's running is that the neighbor is running a landscaping business out of a barn on the Legerd side of the property. Zoning enforcement officer issued a letter for voluntary compliance, and what his opinion had come into voluntary compliance, but the neighbor has said that he keeps a feel that it's not. So, he come to the council looking for, brought the land use committee looking for some help, yet unfortunately, has told them that from a council standpoint, by state statute, does not make that we can get involved, since zoning is completely outside of the legislative body of this valley. He gave some suggestions of recourse to what he could do, continuing noting what he sees as violations, and continue to file complaints with the zoning enforcement. But I know that the mayor's office has also been heavily involved in this as well. Other than that, everything else we talked about is on the agenda for today.
Thank you. Any questions for land use? Liaison reports? Because, I always want to call her mayor. You will always be mayor.
Apparently, we have three mayors.
I have been, I mentioned in the past about the Land Use Commission pursuing use of the Galesbury Community Center. Fire marshal and building official toured the upstairs area that they would like to use, and based on what the Commission wants to do, I think it's structurally okay. There is $25,000 left from a donation that, hold up, let me back up. Four or five years ago, Eastern Community Foundation, they had the thirteen libraries in southeastern Connecticut, $100,000 each. We have $25,000 left. It couldn't be used for upgrading, and so, they would like to perhaps use some of that for prep work, or to find out, you know, how much all this is going to cost. So, they are going to ask the contractor, who has done some recent work at the building, to come in and give them some ideas. The Housing Authority has just, they have a contract with the town to turn over 10% of the income that the residents pay, and this year, it amounted to $8,240 that they have turned over to the town. Also, I went looking for the Housing Authority ordinance, because I wanted to see the section on membership. Found out there is no ordinance establishing the Housing Authority. We have been using the resolution that was set up back in the eighties, or actually in the seventies. So, Roxanne drafted an ordinance, and I met with the authority, and we put together something, and it has gone to the town attorney for review. And it just really would codify everything that, you know, has been going on now. That's all.
Any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, before this library thing gets rolling down the tracks, don't forget about the Permanent Building Committee.
Oh, right, right. But they really don't have any specific plans at the moment, and they are aware. I'm aware. They are aware. Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Hell, these met on August sixth, I believe, and they'll be taking part in the Millstone drill on September ninth. It'll be just a mock terrorist drill, and it's only going to be a tabletop participation. Don't actually be at Millstone, and it'll be evaluated by FEMA on their performance. The new ambulance has been ordered, I believe, one day.
It was ordered a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and 240 days in that day, which should be receiving it. And the old ambulance is traded in towards the new one. Two new members have passed their EMR certification, and hopefully, numbers are unfortunate, you know. I mean, that in a nice way. They're purchasing some ad space in Legerd's police union's safety brochure. The money raised will go towards youth activities, sports, scholarships, and community projects, and other activities that the police union sponsors. And the Galesbury Firehouse will be paving their parking lot, so they have a vendor interested, but no commitment yet. Total cost of project is $75,000, but paying 30 out of their pocket, and the rest of the money is coming from a grant. And there's my report.
Questions? Any other liaison reports?
This is from the Board of Ed meeting of August twentieth. As referenced earlier, I might still have a few things to add to what was discussed already. But, under the superintendent's report, Christopher Palmroyd and Sam Kilpatrick Jr. were introduced as the new middle school principal and director of Buildings and Browns, respectively. New school year bus routes are now public. They include changes, some significant, as you're probably all aware, from the newspaper article and the letter that was shared with us. But, according to the superintendent, there have not been more comments than usual, but they're being taken seriously, and Central Office will continue to observe the bus routes and make adjustments as needed. One Board of Ed member comment was a suggestion to consider maintaining the Legerd Center school facade and use that location for the new police building. Don't shoot the messenger. Under Committee Liaison Reports, High School Athletic Director Jim Bunicore is now liaison to the Communications Committee, will assist when meeting with area middle schools about what Legerd High School has to offer. The Policy Committee looked into the rentals for music uniforms, but according to our attorney, students may not be charged because it is a for-credit course. Additional ag science funding from the state has been discussed earlier, and I think that has been pretty well-covered. Business managers indicated after the excess cost grant was received, and all purchase orders have been closed and transfers made, the Board of Ed ended the fiscal year with the surplus that the mayor referenced of nearly $37,800 in operation. The entire report is in MUNIS. Now, I'm not sure, you know, crystal clear on what needs to be done beyond that. Mayor, to address your concerns, and if we, you can give us some specifics at some time, I can, you know, help make sure that's clearly communicated. The Central/Student Activity Fund Accounts Audit is nearly complete. Accounting practices have been discussed with building principals and secretaries. Bank reconciliations have been completed at all schools except Galesbury, and additional work has been and will be done at Legerd High School, which has the largest balances by far. Just some clarification, especially for folks who might be viewing the video. By and large, and I think it's in all cases, these are not taxpayer dollars, these are funds raised mostly by student organizations, car washes, et cetera, but some other things as well. And students in these other clubs and organizations, or scholarship funds, place their money into accounts which are overseen by the high school. Principal signs off on any expenditures, is aware of the deposits and so forth. And largely because of some extensive absenteeism on the part of the person responsible for getting everything in order, there was a lag in getting some of the record keeping complete, and it appears that we've made a lot of progress on that. Summer maintenance work has been extensive and includes, quote, "deep cleaning, painting, addressing playground safety issues, establishing a traffic pattern at LCS, among many other projects." And as the security studies indicated, some near building parking has been eliminated. And it was noted that as the age of the buildings and oilers is increasing, so are the associated maintenance costs. Under new business, all proposals were approved unanimously. They included presentation by the Director of Special Ed on three different grant applications, one of which is for preschool non-special education. Report was extensive, and it was approved. Policy 6145.2 is on swimming pool safety as revised, and it includes now regulations regarding physical education classes similar to the after-school policy that was passed Another policy on staff-student relations now includes more explicit language from CADE, which is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education. Policy 1525 deals with commercial advertising and promotion in our schools, and includes restrictions on content with language taken from CADE as well. Coach Bunicore, his department will oversee this, explaining the expanded advertising plan, which allows the hanging of banners, and includes three sponsorship packages, whose initial year cost may be up to $1,200. This money will be used to support athletic programs for things that are not typically as part of the budget. New padding in the gyms, memorial signage for fields when a field is dedicated, new trophy cases, restoring the championship banner and others. And the school principal approved all applications and use of funds. And new teacher and administrator evaluation handbooks resulted from the Board of Ed-approved plan and the work of the District Evaluation Committee, and those handbooks were approved. At this point, the Board of Ed went into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation. And that's my report.
Are there any questions? I would just make note that, you said that meeting, the meeting was the twentieth, right?
I believe that's, today's twenty-seventh? Yeah, it's last.
And so, the comments about, there haven't been any complaints about the buses, is because the letter didn't go out until after that meeting, because I know they have had at least fifty change of requests. So, it's just ironic that the meeting was before the letter, and that's why there wasn't much said there.
If I may, just to clarify, there wasn't, they said there hadn't been complaints, they just said that, or Mrs. Patterson said that they were about the same number of concerns that were typically expressed. Now, again, in the weeks since that meeting, there may have been many more, and certainly at least one very impact.
Any other questions, comment?
(inaudible).
Pardon me?
(inaudible).
Oh, the, what is your information, or can you share anything on the security grant for the cameras?
I cannot at this time. Now, I missed the previous meeting when I was away, so I don't have that at my disposal, but okay.
Okay. I think what we're trying to find out is where the town portion of the, where is that coming from?
Right. Yes. Well, again, I don't know the answer to that.
That's fine, but that's for your list. Anything else? Yes. WPCA?
So, WPCA has met twice since the last town council meeting, or at least since I've reported. So, I'm going to give you some updates from the July 29 meeting, which are now quite dated. They met on July 29 here, and that was just after the public hearing on the wastewater treatment facility plan that was presented by the Maguire Group. That plan recommended a $1 million upgrade for maintenance to the existing sewer facility, along with a $90 million sewer expansion program for Legerd Center, Algen Heights, and Christie Hill, with sewage which would be piped to Groton via Route 12. And that's a 20-year view. So, it's important, you know, there were two parts to that study. One is, we need to spend money on the existing plant before it gets very expensive, to the tune of about a million dollars, and then 90 million for a 20-year plan. Also, the WPCA discussed a regional water interconnection group's proposal for connection across Pocatonic Cove between Legerd and Preston, which would be at no cost to Legerd, and the WPCA agreed that they would support accepting ownership and maintenance of that interconnection. So, that would be so we could move water between Legerd and Preston and beyond. At that time, July 29, the Algen Heights pump station had received a certificate of occupancy and was up and running, and between then and now, data testing has been completed, and I believe the pump is up, the pump station is up fully operational, because I saw a letter certifying from the state that it was permitted.
Woo-hoo. I'm sorry, I just had to say woo-hoo.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I thought you were saying, no, it didn't.
Oh, no, no, no. More of that, I can tell you.
Also, the Building Committee agreed to pay for demolition of the old meter storage building and retiring the wells, using funds from an insurance settlement that was found from way back in 2006, with detective work, I think by the Finance Department. And Groton is getting a new estimate for demolition of that, because testing showed there is no asbestos in that building. Also- Also, at that meeting, the WPCA elected the chair and vice chair as the review officer and designated backup to sign liens and hear billing disputes. And they continued to discuss the ongoing problem with customers refusing cross-connection inspections, as well as the fact that either the WPCA or the Ledge Light Health Department can in fact terminate service to any customer who refuses to comply with inspection under state statute. And that's information that they got as a result of one of the council's questions here a couple months ago. Also, at that time, the CUSI database, as the billing database for WPCA, was at Groton Utilities. The website was up, and customers were able to pay online, and the WPCA continued discussing migration of monthly billing. Last night, they met again at seven p.m. here in a regular meeting. I was not able to attend due to a medical issue, but I got the following summary from the chair. The first is that the WPCA continued to discuss the Avery Hill water assessments and the legality of assessing for the project prior to the availability of water to some residents on the system. Because the pump station was delayed, the assessments went out, and some of the residents complained that, well, I haven't got water yet, and I'm not paying my assessment. The second issue is if they don't pay and there's an interest charge, there's legal issues around the town's ability to waive an interest charge. So that's something that's going to take some more work. Let's see. The mayor also requested a meeting to better understand the entire Ledgeard system, and I think that's a great idea because we have a fantastic infrastructure, it's good to understand it. And I'll leave that to the mayor if he wants to comment more on that. There was also further discussion about updating the town's twenty-year water supply plan for the state, which is required, and the need to request bids to get that work done. Former bids have been obtained in the past, but they're kind of old, and we need to get that water supply plan done. They also approved a quote from a vendor to abandon and demolish the former Avery, I'm sorry, the Algen Heights well. And it is, it's the Avery Hill well and pump station, which is now no longer needed because we have water from the system. That vendor has all the permits already received from the state necessary to proceed, and they approved a new voice from the McGuire Group, bringing the total to ninety percent, but they're going to withhold any further new voices until we get a necessary permit from the state. Final revisions were made to a customer letter regarding the cross-connection inspections based on the information we got at the last meeting, and that will be sent out this week. There was also a discussion about the need to coordinate services and charges received in the Town Finance Department and Groton Utility in the posting of these charges against the appropriate year's budget. The vice chair will speak with the Finance Department further about this issue. I don't have any more information about that. Kind of raises some questions for me, but I wasn't there, so I'll see what I can find out. Also, accounts receivable increased again to ninety-four thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars, just as a point of reference to the sixty-six thousand back in April. And personally, although again, I wasn't there, my belief is that in the past couple of years, we reduced our outstanding receivables because the office was making phone calls to remind people to pay their bills. But then there was discussion with Groton Utilities about what they would do to get this amount down. Secondly, monthly billing is also expected to reduce outstanding receivables because people get bills once a month instead of a large bill every three months. And they have a target date for October first to test and implement monthly billing. Again, it's just the target date. There was also a brief discussion about the attendance record of one member and their ability to meet future meeting commitments, and I thought that was important to note because I believe that public service is a commitment, and it's something that one has to uphold. And if you can't attend meetings, you've got to stand up and say, I can't do this, and people should step down. So I think that's important. That's my report. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes.
A million dollars to upgrade the treatment plant, is, would that be borne just by the
That would most likely be borne by the town, but I'm not sure that's decided. The town would have to bond for it. How much of it is paid by the users and how much is paid by the town, I don't think has been determined.
Okay.
But that's an excellent question.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Well, the new upgrades, how long that be good for, or where would that get us?
This was done under a twenty-year view, and the study originally started with just the wastewater treatment facility plant, and then we expanded it to sewer needs for the town. I would have to say, counselor, that I think that would take us for twenty years, but I don't know for sure. Again, this is maintenance, all of these, not an expansion. It doesn't give us any new capacity. It just fixes things that have to be fixed on a regular basis. For the ten years that I've been associated with the WPCA, all of these things needed to be done. So we've made it another ten years. I'd have to think it would probably last a point if we made those adjustments.
Perfect, I mean, I'm a senior neighbor of a treatment facility, sometimes Steve will stop by and talk, you know. What is there now has been working since nineteen eighty-five.
Yes.
So that's the last time that the plant was upgraded. So basically, it's just to upgrade the plant from nearly thirty-year-old technology to bring it up to a level that was short.
Any further discussions? There is some reports, Mr. Francher, a few.
Conservation Commission met on August twelfth, addition of routine issues there. We had a discussion about grants and like one of the two grants that were submitted by Parks and Rec, one that was in their control, and one was under conservation control. And we had a good discussion about, you know, the role of matching funds having to come to the council for approval ahead of going to the grants. And they also acknowledged that there is cross responsibility across several commissions, including Parks and Rec, Conservation, Inland and Mountains. There's information related to this, and we have a new member who is on board, who is the Audubon Society locally. And she brought up the, the Audubon Society has grant opportunities as well related to certain indigenous flows. So what they are going to do is try and look at where these overlaps occur, trying to develop relationships among the other commissions so that when grant opportunities come up, and typically you have only a six-week window potentially to try and grant around, that they would have the information, the basic information already established about what are the non-indigenous plants that are there that some of the plants are going for for remediation of that. There was an animal that was non-indigenous in the waters that was, you know, that they discussed. So they basically asked how to gather that information, not waiting for the grant to show up and try and mass the information and apply for the grant, and get it through the council all within six weeks or eight weeks, which is even challenging. So we had a good discussion on that. The Building Committee met on August eleventh, addition of water project, which Charles Soms covered essentially of that. The only thing I'd maybe clarify, they had a quote for the decommissioning, but didn't act on it. Did, by the way, can you say they acted on it there? Or they, they, there were, there were contingencies.
Yeah, it said they approved a quote from the vendor.
Okay. At the building, they said there were too many contingencies, too many unknowns in the quotes, but nobody to proceed at the Building Committee, so it's hard to tell. That was as a balance, maybe, but maybe some disconnect between.
I hope they got the contingency straightened out.
They, I know that Charlie Collins is going to be looking at this, so hopefully they do. And then the Board of Ed's facilities project was discussed. The discussion was principally centered on the EDO forty-nine forms, there were two separate ones submitted, so effectively, as the state will look at it, it would be two projects, but it's working with the bond and bring it forward to be one. But that's because it's two separate locations, it has to treat it as two separate projects. They are still moving forward with a January, towards January referendum bid. We are, we need to see that bond document proposal by November, September, in order to meet that date. The Sotcha Chelli provided an overview of their final report, which covers the middle school project as well as the Gallup Hill expansion project. They did also look at, like I said, there is information also there is a contrast that they did present at the Board of Ed meeting several months ago, how they came to the recommendation that they did and the scoring of each building. Two things that the chair, Mr. Justwick's asked, questions he's asked several times, one, which was the, when you consolidate the two elementary schools, what are the savings? We had the discussion, the first project, about the year, came forward to the council and expressed if they closed Ledgeard Center School and moved to Gallup Hill, and by his estimate that he put together was about a half a million dollars of this across, you know, across similarities, both personnel and agents. So Mr. Justwick's asked, Board of Ed, that same kind of information, just like if you have, at a minimum, if you have one school instead of two, you're struggling with two principals. So there is some savings at the Board of Ed, and reluctant, reluctant to give the information. Second thing that came up this last time was the, if you remember the project plan from the previous middle school project, they were going to do it in phases. So we build the addition, move one class into the addition, then do the work and replace there. Vacate it, move these kids into that space, basically a three-year process to get them out. The new design essentially tears down the entire classroom area, walls and all, starts fresh. So one of the questions he asked was, what are you going to do with the kids from the time of construction? Where are you going to house the seventh and eighth graders and teach middle school? And the superintendent didn't have an answer for that at that time either. I think those two questions, and maybe others, but those two principally, I think, need to be answered before we as council people forward on development. If five hundred thousand dollars isn't the right number, what is it? If it's nothing, then we need to come back and explain that as well. But I think those two questions, and I believe itself, and Charles Soms and Building Committee both raised those issues and expressed the rationale for why do you think the Board of Ed, or the superintendent, need to come forward with that information to talk to town? Because it's in the public forum, the superintendent can forward what that knowledge is, so the public hasn't been told if they consolidate the two elementary schools, that's the matter. So if it isn't, then we need to come back and explain that.
Well, certainly, when we start going through the process of public hearings, et cetera, those questions are going to be raised. There is no question, it's not just us that are going to raise, it's members of the public. So perhaps we.
And one of my concerns is I haven't seen a schedule for when the Board of Ed is going to hold those. They may be thinking that it's going to be October or November before they do that, or that's after the bond, or I don't see how we can approve bond documents without knowing what that answer is. Because, as an example, if it's five hundred thousand dollars, that essentially pays for the expansion of Gallup Hill's quarter, roughly ten million dollars over twenty years. So it's a wash. But if it's zero, now it's increased, that's official ten million dollars that the taxpayer is going to pay. And it certainly weighs into whether we think it's a viable project or not. And if it is needed, what we need to understand, where are we going to do it?
Just a question, did the superintendent say why she wasn't offering that information at this time?
Not, didn't give any detailed answer, just that she wasn't prepared to provide that, and someone didn't see why she needed to in some way. So it's kind of two ways. She didn't have the information in the Board of Ed, they weren't willing to commit. Part of it was that if you look at the timeline, it could be four, five, or six years before the project is completed, the schools actually heard, and, you know, I know, you could have five or kids showing up in the district, however light the bat is, but you have to give the taxpayer, voter, something, and if you basically, you caveat it to here's.
Given the current numbers.
What's that? Given the current enrollment and anticipated planned enrollment, Gallup Hill, after the addition, and the Julia Long Campus for elementary schools, you know, here are how many classrooms of first through, K through five you're going to have.
Right, right.
And this is how many teachers we'll need. We currently have X, and now we'll be Y, you know, do we need, something, I don't know, the principal, you have, you know, essentially, I think about the same square footage of space, so, you know, janitorial staff may not be reduced much, but there may be some, you know, certain maintenance is going to be something that many managers look at because you're going to have all new equipment. So there's certainly a million dollars or two million dollars depending on the estimate for the roof of Ledgeard Center School, it's a cost avoidance by closing the school. So there are savings like that that can be accounted for and be used to market the project to the residents, which is something.
Would we expect the superintendent to be able to give, you know, some accurate understanding of the money that is being saved instead of renovating or repairing Ledgeard Center School? Is that part of what we're looking for here?
That was part of the question as well. You know, and one big thing that I know of is the roof, but there may be other things that are cost avoidance with the boilers, et cetera, in Ledgeard Center School. But principally, I think the amount of money in the document here presented was only about thirty thousand dollars a year. I think that number is much higher. Whether it is conservative, if you look at a two-million-dollar roof over twenty years, it's a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars a year, so. But I think principally, you want the personnel, when you look at the number of students that are planned into that school based on current home, you want to be able to give a conservative, certainly you wouldn't want to go down to their minimums, but have an idea of.
Something safe.
Yes, yes. And I think that's what Dr. Greer presented, I think it was a principal assistant, that's going to two teachers. It was a total of plus thirty thousand dollars in maintenance, which I think is probably closer to, it's only a hundred or two hundred thousand. But that makes the project more powerful because certainly the residents are willing to, if they don't have a savings, they don't realize the savings are verging on two schools, then you're looking at somewhere north of a little half increase to pay for the bond. So if they can show that half a million, seven tenths of a million is in savings, that certainly makes the project more powerful, and the voters, they can more willing to take it on.
It's in everybody's interest to have it.
That's right. And so we've been asking, so, that, but they have said they've been willing to commit based on, you know, the future, et cetera, to, based on what we know today. And if we were to close Ledgeard Center today and take all those students and put them into the ocean school at Gallup Hill, here's what the census would be for each one of the grades, and here's what the teachers stuff.
Any further questions?
Just quickly, a couple of times tonight, we've talked about grants, and I want to just clarify that for anyone who's listening, may not understand. Often, when a commission or a committee or a board pursues a grant, it obligates the town to pay a certain amount of money in matching funds. And that's not necessarily a big deal if it's a ten thousand or twenty-five thousand dollar grant, but if it's a hundred thousand dollar grant and we have to match it with a hundred thousand dollars and that's not in our budget, that's what we're talking about when we say that those things need to come before the Town Council for approval. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
And to further amplify that, that really should be coming forward as part of the budget process, so the departments, both Board of Ed as well as the town, need to be forward-looking and bring forward as part of the capital approval plan. So that money should be planned in the city, brought forward through planning, so for their occurrence and part of the budget process, so that we can have a discussion and understand the impact. What happens mid-year, if it's twenty-five thousand dollars, it's twenty-five thousand dollars, you're missing the budget, so it has to come out somewhere else for doing it mid-year.
So I know Mr. Justwick's wanted to be here this evening, but he did get called out in business, so he will be here in two weeks. So, but in the interim, I think what I will do is I will send the letter to the Board of Ed occasion, suggesting that those two items, the answer to those two questions would be important for us as far as having to vote on moving forward with bonding.
And one other thing I think will be of interest is sort of the busing. Keep the Gallup Hill open, there would be a lot of busing, maybe a bus or two, three of them, that's another hundred thousand dollars for two buses. And there are many facets to this that could be used to market it to voters, and we'll explain to them that while it will be a significant chunk of change that we will be obligated to, there are savings, there are twenty-year life, which is less than the projected life of the building, but the horizon that they use to calculate it, since that's the bottom of, it wouldn't be for freight and death.
Any other questions for finance? Any other liaison reports? Any other liaison? Mayor Rodmickel.
Okay, thank you. And if I could just add, one thing that was mentioned is, if the cost of heating a sixty-year-old, seventy thousand square foot, single-story building versus heating a brand-new, maybe forty thousand dollar addition, that's two stories, that in itself would be significant. But, thank you, Madam Chairman. The town made its first payment that was required under the Affordable Care Act. It was just a few dollars per employee. It was a minimal payment, but I think we need to be aware that future payments are going to be much larger and are just going to add to the expense of providing health care. So we'll be seeing this as another driver for that particular account. The tax collectors just come through another busy collection season, and of course, the first week in July, and the last week in July, the busiest time of the year in that office. I've attached some interesting statistics on the methods of payment, it's there under my report. Oh, or it's right there. And it's encouraging to see that the greatest increase, even though the numbers weren't necessarily large, was in the web payments. If you see that, that was about two, two-hundred-and-thirty payments more on the web. Dime Savings Bank was pretty static, as was the escrow account. Now, the escrow account is where people, you know, take the envelope that we mailed to them, put their check in there and send it back. It's still significant. But what was the most encouraging to me was the office visit. Now, again, those, those are tax payments. So if somebody comes in with three payments, it counts as three. But to see that, you know, four hundred less people came into the tax office, which is significant. And I go down there and do a live commercial whenever the line gets long, especially since most of them are hand, holding the envelope in their hands, and just spend four dollars in gas to come in and see us. So I think that was, again, very encouraging. The lockbox was pretty, was pretty static. I'm sorry, the lockbox is the, is where people mail the payments. Escrow is paid, is paid by the banks. So again, we're making some inroads, we need to do much more. I have to say, I personally did not do the publicity the way we did last year in December. But we're going to make another push in December, this December, and then next July, really play it up as far as getting people to, to pay their bills differently. On a similar, similar subject, I'm very impressed with the very small number of water customers who continue to come into the town hall to pay bills, so the transition to Groton Utilities has gone very well. They, as to follow up on Council of Sound's comment, the COG applied for a disaster recovery emergency water interconnection grant, and that's to, again, put the pipe under the bridge over the Okatonic Code. And I don't know, this may be an update from you, but Norwich Utilities is going to pay the match for that pipe, and they are going to own it.
Oh, they are?
Yes. I just found that out at the COG meeting last week. So that's a good thing, that's a good thing. Again, obviously, they're looking to expand their systems, a big boost for, for them as well as for us. And as mentioned by Council of Sound, I'd like to host a meeting between Groton Utilities, WPCA, put down some maps of exactly where are the water lines, not just in Ledyard, but in southeastern Connecticut. Where are the water lines in Ledyard? Where do they go? We know they go to Montville, but I really don't have a good, except, I know they go across the river, and I know they go up to Mohegan Sun. But this, this kind of was brought to light recently when they had the Water Main break in London, and then the plans for expansion of the Montville Water System. Montville's looking to spend six and a half million dollars to get water to the high school in that area. And my question is, you know, hopefully, we're making a pitch for that to be our system. Similarly, we know that Waterford and East Line have major issues with water. And again, you know, Groton's got water, Groton's got water to sell, and we've got pipes together there. So I, I just think we need to have an understanding of where, where the different pipes end. And then maybe we need to go on the road and, and pitch what, what we have to offer. Shugill Road Bridge is complete and will be open for traffic on Friday. That project, again, was one, it was engineering and the management was done by the tribe and their, their facilities people. And again, that was a, that was a continuation of several cooperative projects between the tribe and the town. And that one is a culmination of what, ten years since we, since Mayor Menon Hall signed the first MOU on, on getting that done. So again, the council is invited, it's the eleven o'clock ribbon cutting. If you remember what that bridge was before, nobody knew, you wouldn't have noticed it. And now, trust me, it's, it's, it's a bridge now. It's a major, big bridge. I'd like to express my appreciation to the Board of Education Central Office and Ledyard Center School Administration for initiating a solution to the morning and afternoon traffic issue here in Ledyard Center. Although this was the first day of school, the new process for dropping off and picking up children that are not riding on the bus appeared to go well. And this was brought home by the fact that as I was coming back to the town hall, I hear the sirens, and here come the fire engines through the center of town heading to Ledyard Middle School. And I will tell you that, you know, last June, those trucks never would have gotten through the center of town. And here they came right through there with very little, if any, delay. So again, working out the, working out some of the bugs on that, but, you know, it was a good solution they came up with, doesn't involve using the fairgrounds, which is a great idea, everything goes in through the front. So again, that, that was great. I will be meeting with the ACO to finalize the request for the council for the funds for the upgrades, and we will be prepared to make that request to the Finance Committee at next week's meeting. And finally, as was indicated, the Avery Hill Algen Heights Project is done, done. That one, again, was painful along the way, especially the Avery Hill Project, but I had one resident who seemed like the first person I met when I became mayor. And it was very nice when she came in this week and we hugged and we laughed, we cried, but that, that is a big, big project, and I know, much appreciated. We were very fortunate the last six months to have no furtive failures of that system, because they were very, very expensive when they did happen. So major accomplishment in getting water, something that was, you know, a dream twenty years ago, getting water up there. And that's my report.
Mayor, could you just clarify, I'm sure what you said, as you probably didn't think through, about the fire engines flying down to the middle school? Was it false alarm?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I, I guess it was false. They usually are, why? Oh, so the people aren't alarmed.
Fire dropped, go by the middle school.
By now, oh, okay. By now, everybody would know what had happened. I don't, you know, I just saw them leave, I didn't see them coming back.
Okay.
So we do still have a middle school?
Sure, I know.
Okay, so while I stop before, would you, because every time the tax bills come out, there's this flurry of complaints about some people receiving twenty-two envelopes, but could you clarify, you might be doing that?
Yes, and in fact, that was one of those where I sit, you clip newspaper articles, but we are working with our provider, and I don't know what the name of our provider is, No Junk Mail or something like that, the people who send out the bills for us, we contract that out, and they are going to be looking to bundle tax bills. Now, again, I'm not entirely clear how that's going to happen, whether it's by address, whether it's by name. You know, I guarantee if every one of you went home and looked at your, your vehicle bills and your home bills, it's probably highly unlikely that any of them have the same names on them. Because, you know, the cars are registered differently, different initials, but they are, they are saying that they can bundle those, and I think that would be, you know, we would probably save, I think, we estimate several thousand dollars just in mailing by having less, less bills.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Two, two questions. One I've asked several times, I think it's the lockbox, why, why do you mail it? Assuming that's because that's where Webster's Bank.
They go to Webster's Bank, and that is where they go.
I figured that was the answer, but I don't remember, several people didn't understand why they don't mail it to Ledyard. The second was, on the data for the web, for instance, I have four, I put it in, is that payments, or is that measured the same way as the office where it's individual bills?
These are, you know, if you add up the numbers, they tell you these are not household ring, these are bills. These are individual bills.
Even the legal ones?
If you look on here, you'll see there's probably well over twenty, twenty-five thousand bills.
That's why I was asking, I understand the office is counting, I was wondering if the web is kind of taking, just get a number back that says, this is how many web payments we received, and that number's actually larger than seven hundred and forty-five? Because as an example, I paid four bills in web payment.
No, in fact, that's the number of bills, because when you think of it, when you go on the web, you're right, you've got to pay each bill individually. So those are, those are clicks of bills, not, not, this isn't Mike Franz, this is Mike Franz times four.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure this is bundled together in one payment.
I'm sure when I looked at mine, and I wrote one check to two cars, that's two payments. Which, that was, was two payments?
It was.
You made two payments.
I made two payments.
I made, I only wrote one check, but it was two payments.
Okay. I actually know the web works, and sometimes the web just says, this is how many payments.
One payment made for four bills.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, no, no old business. Anybody like to amend the agenda on your new business? Administration Committee?
I'll make a motion to appoint Ms. Margaret Anderson on affiliated Ninety-Eight Military Highway, Galesbury, to the Library Commission for a two-year term ending November seven, twenty sixteen, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Manter. Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion?
Yes.
I would like to thank Mr. Manter, for those who knew Mr. Manter, or know Mr. Manter and knew this way, Carmen, we lost Carmen a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Manter is a longtime member of the Library Commission, I'd like to thank him for the service of the town.
Any other discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebordi?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrovsky?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, item number two.
I'll move to appoint Mr. John Pettiface, Democrat of Sixth Linden Lane, Ledyard, to the Permanent Municipal Building Committee for a three-year term ending March twenty-six, twenty sixteen, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Davis. Second.
Any discussion? I would like to thank Mr. Davis, because he was a, he was actually a, an original member, I believe, on the Permanent Building Committee. He is relocating, and thank him for his service. Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebordi?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, item number five.
I make a motion to recommend the town council authorize a payment of SEAL invoice number two-three-five-three-one-one in the amount of eight thousand dollars for actuarial and consulting services rendered in connection with completion of the July first, two thousand thirteen Gazzby OPEB valuation. Payment will be made from account number six-zero-seven-zero-one-zero-one-five-two-one-zero-zero healthcare board.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? No discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebordi?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, item number six.
Motion to approve this year, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, end of year transfers in the amount of one hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars of presentment in the attack of the legislative file three-two-seven-three.
Second.
Any discussion? And I should mention here, because Mayor brought up the idea of transfers as far as the Board of Education budget, is that when I was on the Board of Education, I realize that was a long time ago, we always made transfers and voted on them. So I'm not sure when that stopped, but clearly it has stopped.
That is a concern, it was, has been raised over the last year by their policy, by state statute, they're required to, if it's less than twenty-five thousand dollars, the Board of Finance Committee can approve the transfer. If it's more than twenty-five thousand, the entire Board of Ed has to approve the transfer. And you're called requesting a listing of transfers are made as a paper. And if you went back into their minutes, you could not locate votes either at the Board of Ed Finance Committee or at the board itself that aligned with the actual transfers that happened. The one, the board that was taken in finance was for more than twenty-five thousand dollars, but unfortunately it didn't match the transfers that happened in the month. It's, it's concerning.
Any further discussion? Yes?
Yes, along that line, I, I typically go back and look at Board of Ed minutes, I've gone back to last, last, you may have remembered in the fall, there was, there was some issues last year because of some teachers that had to be hired, rather large numbers, and at the time, I believe there were some transfers that were brought at least to the Finance Committee. I, I don't know if there have been more than even a couple brought to the Board of Education, which as you said, would be required. So, you know, this, these transfers at the end of the year are fine, but those are usually just the ones to clean up and make everything balance. I'm convinced that because their budget is in unison, in reality, there is an adjusted budget that exists. My question is, through the year, and I don't know how far back a pill they have to go, but, but through the year, those should be happening, and, and this is the best example of what we're doing now, and what happens in just about every Finance Committee, probably starting, you know, late fall, when, you know, we realize that there are some accounts that have to be adjusted. And if I could, just a heads up that the, the new auditor is going to be coming next week to your meeting?
September seventeenth.
Okay, the following one. And this would be a good discussion for him, and I believe Mrs. Hancock is going to be inviting Board of Ed to come to that meeting, to be on that discussion with the new auditor, to get his, his opinion on that or his insight.
Thank you. Any further questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. McGrattan?
Yes.
Mr. Songz?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dobrovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebordi?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries, item number seven.
I make a motion to appropriate six thousand dollars from CNR Fund Account two-one-zero-nine-zero-three-zero-five-five-eight-nine-one-five, designated to Account two-one-zero-nine-zero-three-zero-five-five-eight-two-nine-one, saleable town property. The removal of trailers from Seventy-Seven Christieville Road. In addition, upon the sale of eighteen-eight Centurgroft Road, reimbursed CNR Fund Account two-one-zero-nine-zero-three-zero-five-five-eight-nine-one-five, designated.
Second.
Discussion.
I would like to make a comment for those folks watching. I remember my first observance of a public meeting where the members of the committee I was watching went through the agenda and voted on things that made absolutely no sense to me, with no apparent discussion. So I just want to explain to the residents that what we're voting on right now is, there's information available online to all the counselors, through our laptops, this has gone through a committee, there is background that we've reviewed, and if there happens to be no discussion on this one too, I just want to point out that a lot of the work is done in committee.
A good reminder we make periodically, this one I would, I would imagine we will have some discussion.
Yeah. The mayor has more background, but essentially there's, the property was acquired by the town through foreclosure, there were two trailers on there, there was some environmental remediation performed by the State's VP, there was an agreement now between the state and the town on how that work would be reimbursed, it would be a percentage of the sale of the property, and this is to clear these two trailers off the properties of the Rock Community.
Any questions?
The mayor, if they have to add to that.
Roxanne, would you call the roll?
It'll be a percentage of the sale of the property. Uh, and this is to clear these two trailers off the properties of the Rock and Community Store.
Any questions? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebordi?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Land use?
I make a motion to set a public hearing date to be held on September tenth, two thousand fourteen, at six-thirty P M. To receive comments and recommendations regarding opposed ordinance establishing citation defined for inland wetland violations as contained in the draft dated June the twenty-ninth, twenty fourteen.
Second.
So this is just to set the public hearing date once again before.
And we're gonna be ready?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm ready.
Because I could not be a happy camper if this has to go back. Okay, Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Mr. Cebordi? Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Item number nine.
Make a motion to request the Permanent Municipal Building Committee obtain cost estimates to demolish the building and remove all, remove all in-ground infrastructure at the Leger Center School location.
Second.
Discussion?
Those have been discussed previously, uh, with the abandonment, future abandonment, I should say, of the Leger Center School. By the Board of Education, had an education facility. We in the town are great at building things, but we leave stuff behind and then repair it. As was indicated a lot in the WPCA, but it's, uh, which we have outstanding infrastructure that we can't do it. So this came up as a, we had one school we can't sell that we're now using as a different entity. But do we really want to have another school that we try to sell or that needs quite extensive renovations and updates for codes and things like that? So I think it's prudent for, put it to the bond issue.
That's what I was gonna ask.
When we go into the bond, that this, this amount will be included in the bond so that if the decision to tear down the bond money is there to demolish the building.
Okay. Lots of questions. Let me start all the way on my right. Yes?
I'd just like to point out, um, when we were trying to sell the former Galesbury School, now Galesbury Landing, it was pointed out to us over and over again by potential buyers that, uh, open space is much easier to market than space with an existing building, especially one that requires significant repair, et cetera. And you'll note that in fact, what we did end up selling down there was the open space. So, um, I intend to vote for this. I think this is a great idea. Much better than having a rundown building that we have to try to do something with and retain. Yeah.
So I also want to point out that, uh, this motion is to obtain estimates to demolish Leger Center School. It's not a motion to demolish the school.
Correct.
Secondly, to Council Francis' comment about the cost savings in closing the school, this is a big part of the cost savings and the costs of combining two schools. Thirdly, as I assure you know, I'm gonna mention, I want to remind the council that I suggested that we consider Leger Middle School in my earlier proposal as a potential community center. I do want to know what it would cost to demolish this school, so I'm gonna vote for this. But I also want to put out, uh, potential consideration for use of this building as a community center if we can find an organization like Parks and Rec that might step forward to help pay for the renovation and turn it into such a building. I'm not saying it's the right building, but I want to consider.
Any further, yes, Mr. France?
Uh, two things. First, uh, remind the council, when we put the bond documents forward for last project, the Leger Center School, we did add a little bit in what, I think at the time of that, when we assumed that the cost department would come in lower so there would be sufficient funds left over. So certainly having estimate go again is a much better plan. The question, the second question I have is you're obtaining cost estimates. Are you expecting the building committee themselves to give estimates? Are you expecting to go out for contractors? And if so, how are you gonna pay for a contractor to give you an estimate?
I'm just asking for a rough estimate.
Okay. You're directing them to obtain estimates. To me, obtaining needs to go out to, uh, some kind of general contractor to get estimates. You're asking the building committee to provide an estimate, uh, based on their knowledge and the expertise that they have, which I think they have sufficient there. That's different. So that was the question. It hasn't come through finance for any funding.
No, no.
There's.
At their discretion. If they feel they need to go outside, then they can come back and say that they need more.
Can't you just say that the people that tore down the firehouse, if by the way, how much would, would cost you to do the building across?
Well, I, I already talked to, uh, the justices about this and he feels that the committee could probably pretty accurately tell them what the fair is.
Great. Okay.
I believe you can also just go to a contractor and say, give me a bid to this building.
Right.
Just as you can to build it. So I, I don't believe the cost is involved.
If required, that would be a separate.
Might we just throw in the words rough order of magnitude? Estimates.
Estimates, yeah, agreed.
Okay.
Yes.
When, when they were doing these buildings here, I had some conversations with them. I mean, there is a, there was, there's a rule of thumb, just like construction, you know, with a six or seven dollars per square foot. You've got to remember though, that even though, I can't believe I'm saying this, even though we may be doing some asbestos work there, and I did ask them that also. You know, is it, are you better off doing asbestos work before than tearing it down or afterwards? And he did say that it's better to do the work before. It does reduce. So, you know, the six or seven dollars a square foot and then the remediation and the inspections and monitoring could be quite expensive for there. But yes, you're right. There are, there are rules. I mean, they tear down school buildings all the time.
It also is clarified for expectation from building committees, we're seeing a motion for that, that they don't, they don't think they're being expected to go out and see this in there.
Any further discussion? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Cebordi?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed?
Motion carries. Item number ten.
Um, make a motion to request Parks and Rec Creation Commission obtain a cost estimate to renovate the Leger Center School building to be utilized as a community center.
Second.
I'm gonna let Mr. Song's do the discussion on this.
So, uh, at, at the land use planning committee, uh, we talked about just getting estimates to demolish and I made a point, well, you know, what if, what if my crazy idea has some legs? And, and the town really does want to have a community center, we really can find, uh, the wherewithal in Parks and Rec to operate a community center. Because a lot of what they do is for fee-based services and programs. Councilor Dombrowski was good enough to put this on the agenda because it is a separate concept. We don't want to say we're gonna do one or the other. We want to look at both. So thank you for putting it on the agenda.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Just curious, has, has Parks and Rec Commission, uh, had any discussion with you? I, when I made my initial proposal about, um, the Leger Middle School, I had a conversation with the director and he indicated that there was interest. At one time, the Parks and Rec Commission put an entire proposal together for the center. And there is still interest there. Uh, he was, I think, it was his opinion of the Parks and Rec, but no, it has not been voted on by. No, no, I was just wondering if there, if any. Yeah, I, I, I've had that conversation.
I am opposed. There is a lot of data out there about the cost of repairing, fixing up the community center, uh, excuse me, fixing up a school to be used for anything. Why are we asking Parks and Rec to waste time and money to come up with a plan to use this building that we're going to, just talking about, tearing down? I'm opposed. I think it's not a good idea.
And, and, and I don't discount that.
I mean, we know, we know Don Greasy, how energetic he is. He will come up with something. It's gonna cost him money. It's gonna cost him money to put some kind of a package together and a lot of time. It's a waste.
Again, um, it doesn't cost anything to go out and get estimates. And other towns have done. And I, I totally agree with you, Eric. It is not the most efficient building. The ceilings are too small, too low, the ruins are too small, but still, it is a viable.
The cost of fixing up.
I understand that.
Okay.
Yes.
Could we get Parks and Rec to come to our meeting and, and share their plan with us?
They, wait, wait.
Parks and Rec doesn't even know about this yet.
No, 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 no. I, I talked to the directors. They've done this in the past.
Okay, so I don't know if those are community centers.
There is. I don't even know that it's the right building. I just don't want to discount. I don't want to write it off. Because it is in the center of town. It's a great location. It's a traffic builder still. And I'm still interested in preserving the economic development climate here in the center of town. So that's the only reason why.
While I do very much agree with Council McGrath, especially when you look at the history of W, of YMCA's, community centers in this area, very few of them can make a go of it, except for the fact that if we did something like this, it would mean an incredible paradigm shift for this town. You know, right now, we have Parks and Recs, we have all the sports leagues, we have the schools, we have the senior center. We have all these people putting on programs at, you know, ten or fifteen different facilities and fields. You know, we would have to look at all, you know, we're not gonna add a program here. You're gonna have to take all of those and put them in a room and say, okay, figure out how all of those things come together under one umbrella for providing, uh, programs for the town. Uh, so that's gonna be a very, very different, very, very different from what we do now. You know, in a sense, right now, we have about six different indoor community centers. Go to any school in this town, any evening, and you will see programs and kids like you can't believe. You want to put those under one roof, which you could not do, even here you couldn't do. You know, it's gonna mean a, a very, very different, uh, arrangement of town departments as we see them.
Yes.
My, my only comment is, I think it's pretty sure. I mean, we're looking at probably five to six years before the elementary school, sixth graders and those who have to do. You know, a discussion, you know, in theory, but I think it's, it's pretty sure, you know, hopefully that the use of the building is. Uh, I think something that's outside of Parks and Rec's commission's knowledge is, was buried underneath the playground. I think there's some interface with wetlands that needs to happen and is probably beyond what we do as far as the dream. And I also heard his energy when he was talking about the, the middle school. He immediately said it would be self-sufficient and.
Far better building.
No, no, no argument, no argument, but I question the numbers that he was running, that it would be self-sufficient. Uh, in maintaining, maintaining a building with program and the cost we have now, uh, because they're not self-sufficient. What they have now, they don't pay for infrastructure, such as they're paying into the fields. They're not paying into the building. Buildings are such a, we're, that's built by and large, except for the upper fields. So, um, my comment is that it's pretty sure.
Any further discussion? Uh, my comment would be, um, I'm actually in support of a, um, community center. I think the, uh, Galesbury, um, community center building would be perfect for a Leger community center. Um, it's much smaller and manageable. I think that building is way too big for a community center. And in addition, that building is in the way of my vision of the town's dream.
Oh, no.
So I'm, I'm in favor of demolishing.
Not a ready spoken.
No, no. Just my visions, but, uh, at any rate, I just wanted to say when I, that when I vote against this, it's not because I'm opposed to a community center because for many years I've been in support of that and in fact was in support of it when they raised it those ten or fifteen years ago. So any further discussion? Yes?
I, I think Council Song knows I'm very enthusiastic at the prospect somewhere in the future of having a community center. But as this is written right now, we, there's nothing to direct Parks and Rec in what we imagine a community center to be or to entail. You know, when we talk about, you know, a place like Galesbury Community Center, you know, I would hope that if we're gonna dream about having a place where the community can come together, that it would be more substantial than that. So I'm, I'm just concerned that if we were to pass this, uh, without any direction of, just generally speaking, would we like to see a swimming pool? Would we like to see, you know, an opportunity for this, that, a little small theater included? And it wouldn't turn out to be productive, uh, without more guidance than we're capable of giving right now. So as much as I'm enthusiastic about the community center, I, I don't think going forward with this particular thing right now is worthwhile.
So let me make a.
Didn't Parks and Rec come up with a plan for community center X number of years ago?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay. And it was turned down by voters?
No.
The voters didn't want to pay for it. They didn't want to build the building.
It never weighed to the voters.
It never weighed its rep.
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Oh, yeah, we didn't make it.
It never made it to rep.
Oh, excuse me. I thought it, well, it was turned down.
By the council perhaps, but it never waited, it never went to the voters. Somebody turned it down. I'm not sure.
I don't think it ever came out of Parks and Rec. I think they came up with a plan, but it never wanted to further because talk to members of Parks and Rec at the time that they, they, at the time, maybe today, I don't think the Parks and Rec Commission believes that they have the resources to man.
Well, that's not the story I got. The story I got there is they put tons of work and research into it.
Right, but also at the time, they also determined that they didn't have the resources to operate and run in the town a community center. So they tabled it themselves. They made a whole different plan, but they tabled.
Parks and Rec went to a lot of trouble and there's a lot of information out there. I can't remember the details.
Any further discussion? Yes?
I'm not comfortable voting either way in this one right now, Ralph, not knowing where community center boss. It's not a big building to fill up with activities and, you know, they're not broken now. They're functioning just fine at the moment. So without, and like the mayor said, if you take all these activities around town, bring them under one roof, now we're not utilizing those buildings for activities. So there's just a lot of things that I'm just not settled on at this point and so comfortable voting on this.
So would it make sense to withdraw the motion and get some more information?
Yeah, I think, I would be comfortable with that.
How about to the other councils? Yeah, not just information, but discussion, even informally among ourselves about, you know, a, a vision of what a community center should be.
It may be with Parks and Rec, it would disagree.
But I mean, you know, I don't know how many of us have even, you know, it's not really on the table for us now. We've got plenty of building going on in a lot of these spaces. But, but even if we were to just, you know, consider ourselves, you know, informally, just if we did have a community center, what would we like it to be? I mean, the concept, you know, I, I get, I, I'll be honest with you. I get a little tired sometimes of hearing that there are people who live in Leger and people who live in Galesbury. Uh, and I, I, I know that we have our separate post office and so forth, but, and I believe that we're one town and we're one community. But we don't have too much in the way of what draws people from different parts of the town together. And I, and I think, you know, the potential of, of a true community center, uh, with the emphasis on both community and center, has potentially helped with that. But I just don't feel like we've even, um, at this time would be productive to go with it.
Well, the, the most I'm right now is to get estimates to renovate the building for something that we're really not sure what it's gonna be. You know, a community center. I think the only precarious community center is or does, and we've already got one. I'd rather see money and time focused on developing that community center before we bring in another one.
Well, we don't really have a community center.
Well, it's Galesbury, though, I read, um, Galesbury.
Yeah.
You have a couple of.
Probably.
Okay, I scratched that last comment. What I'm saying is, I don't think we understand what community center involves and can it fill the building? So I, I, I'd like to table this.
You sure it's Don Greasy?
Is that a march in his tail?
I'd like to move to table this right now till we get a further discussion with Mr. Greasy and better definition.
I'd recommend not tabling because it stays in the agenda. I was recommended we're not comfortable withdrawing motion right back at some future time. Any of the questions to be raised here, I can answer.
One, one final comment is that we, as the councils, probably are not gonna be the right people to go tell Parks and Rec what a community center should entail. I think Parks and Rec should be the one telling.
I'm, I'm.
But that was the point is that, hey, here's a building that may be potentially available. That's the point of the motion, so.
Yeah, yeah.
If this building becomes available, if we decide not to tear it down, if we decide to give it to Parks and Rec to use as a community center, what would be your vision? What would you do with it? What would it cost to renovate the building for use? That was the intent of the motion. I personally don't support the motion either. I mean.
Then we're done.
So, so as the, as the mover, I think if you just withdraw it, withdrew it, we'd all be happy with it.
I, I withdraw the motion.
Okay, it's pretty cool.